Do I do this?
Thank you, Steph Taylor. It's 6:01, we'll call to order. This is my first meeting as the chair from the jump. Am I, is that correct? I'm supposed to call to order? Great. And so we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the Republic, which stands one nation, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. And now we'll do a roll call.
Roll call. Chair Wise.
Here.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Here.
Commissioners Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez has to work, but she says she may be late. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Here.
We have a quorum with five present.
Fantastic. And we'll move on to communications. We'll start with the City Council Liaison Report. Who? Councilman Mateus is not here, so we'll skip to the Commission Secretary Report.
Question is, he's not online. He is going to be in attendance. I, he did email say that he would be here, so maybe he's just running a little late.
Then we will, then we can push that over till he arrives.
Right. So I'd like to say we have a full agenda today. And a lot of good work will be done this evening. One of the things, Chris Platzer, well, not Chris Platzer, I'm sorry. Doug Darling wanted to be here, make a presentation. I've sent you the links. So he's going to make a presentation at the September meeting. So he decided not to attend today. He may come, but he told me he wasn't. So if he does, he does. But he said that he would be at the September meeting, our September meeting, make a, have more time to make a presentation. And that's my report.
Thank you, Steph Taylor. Now we'll move on to presentations and commendations.
Through the chair, please. Sorry. I do not have an agenda. Is there an agenda?
I just have the one you sent us, the PDF. That hasn't changed, right? Okay.
I printed out copies. Apparently we don't have the copies. No, we have printouts sometimes, we have copies sometimes.
Does anyone else? Because I handed them out to the public, the ones I printed.
On the phone.
Okay. So there's that.
Cool. Okay. And we go to presentations and commendations. If anyone has anything to present or commend.
None at this, none tonight.
Great. Then we'll move on to the community forum.
Thank you. Through the chair, went ahead and started a two-minute timer, which is reflected on the top-left corner of your screens for interested parties to sign up for the community forum by signing up on the kiosks in the back or by raising your hand on Zoom. As of right now, we have one member of the public with their hand raised wanting to speak during community forum. Would you be willing to hear them while the timer runs out for the signup period?
It would be my pleasure.
Phone number ending in 622. Please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hi, yes. My name is Sarah Wright, and I'm the Chair of the Beautification Commission. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to your commission, Sister City, and also recognize our member, Rick Wirick, for his participation on the placement of the Anaguarra. It's a very important item, and I appreciate you all working on this and taking time to make sure that it's located in the ideal place. Just wanted to say thank you so much and look forward to seeing what you all decide.
Thank you. And there's still about 35 seconds on that timer. But as of right now, we do not have any other members signed up for the community forum. Feel free to carry on with the agenda.
And as much as, no one, no one in the, in the room here was for the community, for this section?
Through the chair, they, a lot of them have signed up for the action calendar.
Perfect. In that case, I would like to just step back as Councilman Mateus has joined us. If we could step back to the City Council Liaison Report. Put you right up, put you on the spot right from the jump.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity and apologies for my tardiness. On the council side of the House, we've been quickly chipping away at, you know, what is our number-one priority for the year, which is public safety. We have put together a summer mitigation plan that will reduce the cost of programming for our youth, that will install surveillance towers across each of our districts where we know there are crimes being committed that will set aside $300,000 for the implementation of the Vallejo Vision Program, which is a gun violence prevention, crime prevention initiative that's being spearheaded out of the Police Department. And we are similarly continuing the Safe Passage to School Program that the Police Department piloted this past spring for the start of the new school year. And so that's, in addition to continuing negotiations with the Sheriff's Office to have supplemental law enforcement support in 2026, we are putting together, both through programs and now policies, as we move into the fall, a comprehensive plan to improve our safety apparatus as a city and hopefully not just keep Vallejo in safe, or safer, but also, you know, create the conditions for some economic development to flow into the community. On the arts and commissions front, I have been closely, you know, monitoring and asking for updates from our staff around the progression of the cultural district application that I know this commission and body has been working on. We had additional applications for candidates to join this commission in those interviews, I believe, happened a week ago. Losing track of time. And, and then similarly, I have had the opportunity to have some exploratory phone calls with funders who fund the arts just to better, get a better sense of, you know, what work they have already contributed to, you know, in our area and what are some possible partnership opportunities with the city of Vallejo. Just this morning, I had the opportunity to reconnect with the, with the Hewlett Foundation, which has been heavily investing in the city of Vallejo for years now. And we had some, some good discussions about the future of that partnership in alignment with the work that they've already been doing around the arts. So as things continue to progress, I will continue to share our updates from my side of the House, where I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have on not just the arts, but any other city business.
I have a question, actually, with that, with that opening. I know there's this huge focus on public safety and that a lot of that was very police and sheriff-heavy. I do, I speak both as a member of this council and as a person with some small kids. I know there have been a number of vehicle accidents. And I just want to make sure that part of this discussion of public, public safety and safe trips to school is a focus on making the streets safer, not just in terms of crime, but in terms of that side of things. I know a young boy was struck not too far from where I live yesterday by a car. And so that is something that is on my mind that I'm, we just want to, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Just a horrific incident. And, you know, I have no words to, I don't even want to imagine what that family's going through right now with, with Isaac. So I hope things can get better for him soon. And to your point, there is a lot that we have to do, and it's not just around policing. It's also around creating the conditions for our kids, our seniors, to be safe in our city. And so one of the things that I know I can specifically speak to is this element around pedestrian and traffic safety. That bucket, or that program, had not been funded for about a decade. And it was only two years ago, or if not a year ago, that the previous Vallejo City Council started to put some dollars into traffic calming measures. There was an initial $300,000 allocation made at the request of former councilmember Loetta Diaz. That was then augmented to $700,000 under this new council. And part of what's important to share out with the public there is, and this is not to make excuses, it's just the reality of the situation we face right now. There's a backlog of about a decade's worth of work that has not been implemented around traffic calming measures because there was no funding put into it. So we're trying to work through that in addition to refilling key public works positions that can then, you know, be the one, be the folks who actually carry out that work. And so you have my commitment, you have the commitment of the entire City Council on that front to make sure that we're also looking at, you know, pedestrian and traffic safety. And one of the things that we're doing at the policy level is exploring the adoption of the Vision Zero Plan, which many other cities have adopted, but we have not. And we, as a council, set aside $700,000 to start to formulate and develop that plan specifically around, you know, traffic safety more broadly. So we are taking steps. Unfortunately, it's not as fast as I know folks would, would like. And, and I, I can share as a parent that sense of urgency that I know many share across the community.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I wanted to say, I really love to see, I believe it was this past weekend with Cassandra James, they did the Safe and Just, the Country Crest Cleanup.
Yes.
And I was like, that was a really great, you know, idea to bring that to life. And I was hoping like, maybe in the future, we could do something similar to other areas of Vallejo, get more people in the community involved with the cleaning up and just taking pride in the neighborhood because we all know it starts with us, the community as well.
Yeah. At the city level, what I can share, thank you for your comment around that. So I just want to express gratitude to Supervisor James, Councilmember Letitjue, Councilmember Matualak. They were the ones who led and spearheaded that cleanup, which I attended, it was a week ago, I believe. And my understanding is that that will be held at that location on a bimonthly basis on a go-forward. I also know Councilmember Gordon held a cleanup earlier this year in her district, in District Six. And so I know there is broader general commitment from this council to make sure we're doing our part to beautify the city. And that may look differently. But I think, to your point, it starts with cleaning up. So I know I'm committed to that in District One. And, and as the year progresses, you guys will continue to see those efforts playing out across the city. But so far, we've had to, and residents have really appreciated it.
Commissioner Allen, are you?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Mateus, for, for being here and for the status update. And I also can't have, I don't have words for what's happened recently in the tragedies. But when we're talking about the arts, and this is our commission, Culture and the Arts, so we have to sort of shout theater in a crowded fire. So looking at the arts, the three documents that this commission has come up with in the past seven years, I'd like to get a status update or at least table it for a later date. The long-term funding for the arts document, the gift policy, and the loan policy, which are different. Part of it will feed into, and dev till into a discussion we'll be having in a presentation about a presentation of artwork with a living artist in the, in the room who also has another project. So again, it all feeds together. So again, I know there's a lot of other important things we could and should be talking about, but I just wanted to get a status update, if that's possible. Thanks.
Through the chair, I can give a status update on long-term funding for the art. Had a meeting with the City Attorney's Office, City Managers' Office, and the Planning Department last week regarding the draft policy that this commission recommended be looked at. So it is in the process of being reviewed. The other two are currently still with the City Attorney's Office. We have not had meetings, but it was acknowledged that it is on their agenda.
Thank you. And I realize the City Attorney's Office is a lot on, on their plate right now. Thanks.
And the only two cents I can add to that is if you go back, was it just this past meeting? No, it was two meetings ago, on the 22nd. Not this past meeting we had, but the one before that. I asked the City Managers' Office to bring forward the work plan for the Economic Development Commission for Adoption, which we just approved at the last meeting, and all of your documents that you have now sent over to the council. So I made that formal request from the DIES, and we got support. I got support from the rest of my colleagues on that. So I will make sure to follow up so we can put that on the queue. Our agenda has been a little heavy. Yeah. But I just wanted you to know I did follow up on that publicly.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Thank you. On the traffic calming, and we'll be getting to it later in this commission, but the Measure P funding, one of the ideas that we had was for murals on the, on the street, which would, I think, would be a traffic calming measure as well. And so working with the Measure P funds to augment that, I think, would be a really good thing, along with whatever the City Council wants to do for, with public works, to do the traffic calming as well. I think that art can slow down traffic just because it's something for people to look at as they're going, as they're driving along the road.
Yeah. When I originally made the referral, admittedly, I only had a few seconds to make my case. We were talking about a public works project in Mare Island, and I included it in the motion, but I didn't really get to speak to sort of the intersection and of the arts and public safety and the inherent benefits that come from that. And so I very much appreciate that you guys have done that research, that you have put together some compelling ideas for that commission to consider, and hopefully that process moves forward. Not sure when that will happen, but I very much appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Just FYI, I have, if this, if the commission recommends what is presented in the packet today, that it would be, I asked to be placed on the September agenda. I'm not here in August. Well, I'm here, but I'm on vacation. And I know you may be on vacation as well, and thought that you may want to be present when this would be presented. So I've asked for a September date. I was going to announce that when we got to the item, but since we're taking things out of turn, I will state that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you so much, Councilman Mateus, for letting us grill you a little. Great. Let's quickly, let's move on to the consent calendar so we can get to our lovely friends here in the room. Approval of agenda. First, someone's to recommend an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Cool.
It was moved by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Vice Chair Vidor to approve the July 28, 2025 agenda. Roll call. Chair Wise.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson.
Yes.
Passes five to zero. Thank you.
And now approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of June 23, 2025. I will motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Chair Wise, seconded by Commissioner Thorson to accept the, approve the minutes from the June 23, 2025 regular meeting. Roll call. Chair Wise. Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson.
Yes.
Passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can move on to the action calendar. We're going to start with the Black Lives Matter mural proposal. And I believe Askari Sawande is here.
Yeah, she's, she's coming. And she's also provided a presentation for Manny to show.
Fantastic. It's good to see you again. I'm glad for the presentation.
Blessings to you guys. I'm just here for a short period of time. This is just basically a recap of what we've talked about before. And so we'll just go ahead and show it. I've asked that it be sent to you guys individually afterwards so you can take time to take a look at it and see what's going on. And then I can ask some questions or make a statement. Okay, Brother Manny?
In 2022, an initiative was launched to install a Black Lives Matter mural in front of City Hall in Vaillamo. This endeavor was both a challenging journey and a significant struggle, but ultimately, we succeeded. Our community united in the understanding that while all lives matter, the lives of Black individuals have historically been undervalued, particularly within our community. Regardless of differing opinions, this mural was conceived out of love and a desire for justice. We extend our gratitude to the community for recognizing its purpose.
Manny is placing this piece on for you guys, just so that you have an understanding of the murals and different things that we could do out here. The different examples of the types of murals that we can have on our walls. There are so many spaces that are downtown and all around town that needs a beautification. Art is a healing thing. I understand that we also have a lot of pressing things that are going on in the community, but we'll always have pressing things going on in the community. And as an individual that has worked on the commission, it is imperative that we get from 10 years ago and get to the present. Still, again, I understand that people are still trying to work on stuff, but we are still waiting to get answers and receive funding to be able to produce for our community. For me, that's a frustration, extreme frustration. The ability to be able to present murals and bring in our youth from the school district and be able to pay them a stipend, to be able to utilize them and maybe give them an award. But there comes funding to do that. That's not coming out of my pocket. Last time we did this, I went out and got volunteers. I got the paints. I got all of this stuff, but I can't do that and won't do that when this is a community thing, when this is a city's project. Our Black Lives Matter, we already understand that all lives matter, but this is something that is special and historical. It's an ancestral thing that is imperative, that must be placed back. The blessing is, when they were about to get rid of it, because they were going to fix the streets, I was contacted. So it wasn't anything, and I'm saying this so people won't think that, oh, all of a sudden, you know, what happened to it? Why is it gone? What did they do to it? Because some people did contact me as though it was problematic. It was not problematic. It was received well. It was a beautiful piece, and that's why I wanted you to see what it actually looked like before. I didn't want anything that was just letters. I wanted art. But this time, we want, because we cannot get the solution to place over top of it, to keep the wheels, the traffic wheels, from being able to pull it apart, we need to go up. We have to put it on top of a wall. How we get the funding for that, I don't know. What year will this be implemented? I do not know. That's the frustration. But as you see on these pictures that you're seeing up there, there's all types of examples that could be brought here to Vallejo. You drive down the freeway, you get closer to Emeryville and to Oakland, and you see all of this beautiful artwork, and then you, we, I'm sorry, we come here not to put anything down, but we need to uplift and rise with the stuff that we do. Even when you're talking about cleaning up and what have you, the beautification of our freeways and highways and byways, that's all in art. Okay? Every aspect of it is in art. I love this community, been here for 40 years, and it's about time for us to rise to the fullest occasion and stop all the talking. I sit back and I listen to some of these commissions, and I, and especially with this one, because I know the love that you guys have, because I've been here, or you wouldn't be here. But how frustrating for myself and others, and it must be for you, to know that you can only move like a little worm in terms of getting stuff done. How many more years? How many more years? So I'm going to close out. This is important, that we move forward, try to, we have grant writers. We've been talking about grant writers for at least seven years, and so when do we utilize that? To get some funds in. Hewitt Packet Foundation brought in $500,000 to be able to assist the community. I was a recipient of that. I've been doing stuff in this community for 30 years, and it took that much time to be able to receive something here. And when asked to give them an award or something of that nature, it was dismissed. Who comes into our community to give us 500,000? Name one. I'm waiting. I can't hear it. So it's time for us to really stop talking the talk and really move forward again. I understand that there's a lot of pressing issues here, but without the arts in it, there can be no healing. There can be no healing. Can anybody hear me? There can be no healing. And it's time for our city council, our city manager, all of the above, to take it to the fullest level. Not trying to be offensive, not trying to do any of that. But as a person that's sitting back and looking, we've been talking for a long time. So thank you for the blessing. I don't know really how to take this into a direction, because we have no funding. So how do we put Black Lives Matter back? How do we do it? Because it's going to take funding to be able to get scaffolding, to get the paint, to do all of that stuff. So how do we do that? How do we put something back that needs to be there? So I thank you for listening. I thank you for your time. I love this community. I love our youth. I'm invested. I've put my blood, sweat, and tears, my finances, which I have very little of, into this community. It's time for the city to really come back and not put us on the level of other cities like San Francisco, like Los Angeles, New Orleans, which our city seems to think we should be on the same best practice. We are not them. We are Vallejo. We are our own entity. Let's rock within that aspect and make this a powerful place to be. I thank you for the blessing. Ashay.
All right. Through the chair. To give some background on the first mural and the present mural, as the commissioners who were there then, the two of the commissioners who are present still here, it was, we approved the concept of the mural, and it became a city project, and the city public works paid for the paint, things of that nature. Ms. Sawande selected the paint, the colors. Some colors weren't available because of the, what was needed to be on the cement, but you worked with.
Well, Sharon Williams, because when I went into there to get some paint, I met the representative, and he asked what I was doing, and I told him, and he said, well, I want to help. So he also donated a lot of paint. In fact, they went through, Patrick went through him to be able to find a solution to go over the artwork, but they couldn't find, and from my understanding, they searched nationally to be able to find this piece, and we couldn't do it. So we just decided we were just going to go through it and do it anyway, because it was just that important.
Right. It was Patrick Huckerson with this Public Works Department, who Mrs. Sawande worked closely with. This project, again, what, before you this evening, is approving the concept. As was stated, no funding has been recognized this time. Ms. Sawande is, you know, also asking, last time she used volunteers. This is a larger project, and she's requesting payment as some type of stipend for those who are working on this project. Again, this commission is to, if it's your call, is to approve the concept, it will then be passed on to the city manager and city council. So that is what is before you this evening.
With that, then I'd be able to go to the school district to be able to start getting things implemented with the kids. So just wanted to let you know that. Is there any other, are there any questions for me before I leave?
Vice Chair Vidor, you were.
Thank you. Through the chair. I want to address the former Black Lives Matter mural on the street and what I saw, which was paving over a mural for no reason. There was nothing wrong with that street, and it did not need to be repaved. So I did not see any public works digging up or changing of the asphalt in any way other than just paving over it. And there are other streets in this city, Capitol Street, right up here, which could drastically use a repaving. And what I saw was they chose to pave over a mural. And my fear is that when, if we put this on a city building, that the city will once again paint over it or change it in some way without acknowledging the art that's there. And so I think that a part of this program should definitely be something where the city has to acknowledge that the art is there, acknowledge that the artists are the owners of that art, and that they will not paint over it or change it in any way without acknowledgement and without approval from the artists and the people that work on it.
Through the chair, if I may. Artwork by artists, there is a process, especially for murals, that the city has to go through. So I want to state that. I don't, I can't say why Santa Clara Street was selected. Apparently, it was on the list to be selected, so that's why it was selected. So I won't get into the discussion if it should have been or not should have been. It's done. It has been done. So we're here to move forward, to see what we can do with this concept that's being presented tonight.
If I may, just briefly, it is also important that our artwork be a representation of who we are. And the wheels from the car was tearing it up. That I could not, it was driving me crazy to see a piece that was so beautiful that we could not save, and it was just being deleted. So I am grateful that they, I hear what you're saying, but I am also grateful that they at least picked up the phone to give me a call to let me know what was going, because I received phone calls right after that, and that would have been problematic. So we also have to think about that, too. Just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Press your hand.
I just want to say, Mrs. Skari, I was around and available and actually did a little bit of lick of paint there and was very happy to support it. So you're pushing in an open door. Regardless, and I thank you, Staff Taylor, for clarifying, what's gone is gone, right? And putting it on a vertical surface makes a lot of sense to me. I have given it much thought, since it's been a couple of months since this was originally brought up. I would slightly disagree with Vice Chair Vidor about private versus public buildings, only because I was here when Paramount, I'm sorry, a movie company decided to take down a mural off of Georgia Street, and that was a private building. And, you know, look, it's private property, and the owner decided that that was okay. And there was no process, but it was a community mural, and a lot of people, there's a wailing and gnashing, there's nothing they could do, supposedly. And then said movie company, it's my understanding, gave about $10,000 to the city to sort of smooth over that, and, but there was no other mural that then went to replace it. However, with the assurances of the city, if it is a city building, there would be something in place that unless the building was scheduled to be razed or brought down, that mural would stay in perpetuity and would be protected with an anti-graffiti surface or something, and there wouldn't be traffic ruining it, as you said. So I'm mindful of the concerns, but it sounds like going forward, especially if a gift policy or loan policy is in place, that that's a codicil that could be put on that, that if there's anything that needs to be repaired, that the city's on the hook for that and that it would protect it.
Right. We really appreciate that. It was important that when we did this piece, that it was placed in front of the city. We have to remember why this was done also. Though we also had, I mean, it was really a major fight, both Black and White and all the different cultures, and not understanding, this was about our ancestors and what we've been through. And as you can see now between '45 and '47, this is still a major issue today. So it was imperative that when we put it down in front, that whoever walked across that, whatever your culture is and whatever your thoughts were, especially in the city where we were believing that we were not being seen and everything was transpiring, you need to understand that our lives matter. We already know that all lives matter, but we weren't receiving that respect. So that's what this is about, of people that have been there fighting for many, many years and will continue to. Okay. Any other questions?
So I, in terms of what we should recommend tonight, vote on, I guess, I personally don't feel entirely clear on what the concept is that's up for approval. Is it just the cons, I, first of all, I want to thank you most sincerely for your time, and I am very in favor of this mural, but in terms of what we're bringing to city council, would you like just sort of to push forth that we would like a Black Lives Matter mural placed on a building so then it could continue forward? Rather, just, there isn't a specific concept for what it would be, because it sounds, my understanding from the presentation is it wouldn't necessarily be a one-for-one? Or were you looking to potentially recreate a version of the street mural on?
No, we're going to come with a new version altogether, and that's why I'm going basically with, as the youth that are interested, and also having some type of funds for a first, second, and third prize, that type of thing, so that they can be appreciated. But that's basically what that is. Does that make sense to you? Okay.
Through the chair, what was presented, the first mural, you did have concept drawings.
Yes, we did.
That the commission was able to look at and say for. This time, you've had, in your presentation, there's not just one or a, you have not selected a particular.
Oh, no. Those are just examples of ideas of what I would like to really see transpire in this community, in this city.
And so what the council may request, I think as they did prior, is.
A drawing.
A selection of drawings that can be looked at.
Well, yeah, that has to be done that way. So we'll, you know, put something together, and I'll pick out what I think is really the best for it, because I don't want other people picking out for us what we want. This is a project about our youth. This is a project about what we see, not your vision, because that's important. We've had enough of that over the years. Okay, so.
Okay. And one correction to Commissioner Allen regarding the mural that was on the private property, and there was an outcry. To my knowledge, the amount of money was never divulged, and it did not come to the city. It was, because it was not a city project. It was provided, my understanding, to, the mural depicted someone had been slain, and then it grew that more and more people who have been slain over the years, and it was a community project. But my understanding, the money did not come to city coffers. So just, I just don't want that out in public.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I retract the accusation, if that's the right word.
No.
It was just one of those things where I know money was paid, but it sounded like it was paid to the city, and it wasn't. It was paid to someone. It wasn't paid to the victims. It wasn't paid to the families. It wasn't paid to the artists that made the mural, and there was no mural that was there to replace it. So wherever the money went, it went.
Yeah. That was not, mine, again, not being involved in the negotiations.
Understood.
I had suggested that they do not paint on that wall and paint over it, but as you pointed out, the owner of the building, it was his building, there was some damage done, and the agreement, my understanding, was not necessarily to replace it with a mural. So I just want that out there.
Understood. That's private property, and that I totally understand that. Public property, and it sounds like a lot, well, it looks like in your presentation, Mrs. Skari, that a lot of the buildings were this building or the brick siding.
And then some of the malls down nearby, Soul Trans.
Right.
You know, places like that. And if any of those, those were just places that I selected.
Sure.
And if there are places that we could not utilize, then someone just simply has to let me know. That's not even an issue. But I just went around one day and said, let me just snap these photographs and saying, look, wait a minute, these can be beautified. It's about time we beautify our city. We see it everywhere else.
Understood. Thank you.
So through the chair, will you be able to provide, prior to our September meeting, perhaps some drawings that you?
Not from the youth. Youth are out. If something came up, it would be something that I would be putting together, and I don't want to do that.
So you want it from the youth?
I want it from the youth.
So it may be.
There may be a couple of people, but yeah, I have to wait until September was, you know, give them a time to get back in the swing of things. They're going back in August, so. They're going back in August, so.
Can you, so let me rephrase it then. After you meet with the youth, will you be able to provide drawings that the commission then can say, we approve this concept, to take that forward?
So here's my question for you. Is it worth it for me, really, to, I'm just being honest, to do that at this juncture when we know that we have no funds to give to these youth? I don't want to present something to them that I cannot be able to back up and then say, well, you know, I got you guys doing all of this, this is a part of entrepreneurship, all this other kind of stuff, but we don't have any funds. I don't want to do that. I know what it's like when that happens with me.
Okay. But that's a valid point. So what this commission can do is say, we approve the concept, and if they ask the questions, I will be in contact with you.
There you go. Thank you for the blessing.
I'll do it that way.
Okay.
I was just trying to circumvent that, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perhaps the motion to push forward, I was going to say, is that we approve the concept of a Black Lives Matter mural going up on city property to be brought back to this commission with, on, for a design level, but sort of specifically pushing forward the concept so that City Council can look at it and say, yes, we are in favor of putting aside funds for this, so that way we can, in terms of not getting the cart before the horse too much, but also still moving it forward, would that, does that sound possible, sort of to bring it forward that way, but to sort of explicitly tell City Council, the exact design will be generated by the youth of Vallejo, and so does not yet exist, but we need a financial commitment before we can move to that step?
One question, are you limited to city buildings, or you may be looking at private buildings? Because I don't want to limit it, so if, are you just concentrating on city buildings at this point?
I'm concentrating on city.
Okay, city on buildings.
Keeping it down in this area where we started. It's a purpose.
Then I would like to raise, I would like to raise that motion that we bring forward to the City Council, an approval of the concept of a Black Lives Matter mural to be put on city property, designed by the youth of Vallejo, to be brought back to the council at the design stage.
Is it appropriate to second that motion, or can we just?
It has to be.
Through the chair, we do have public comment on this item.
Oh. Well, fantastic.
Sorry, Manny, thanks.
TJ Walkup, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hello. Hi, guys. I'm here for two things tonight. We're going to stop one of the computers here. There, there we go. Hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I want to say that Scari has been here for a long time and done a lot of great work with the arts for years as a cultural bearer. She's been in meetings, as I have with her, the Men's Study School of the Arts and with various people from HP. This is not new, her wanting to work with youth to do something that's definitive, to craft how we come together as a unifying force, as a community, around issues like this. And it's not new, her presenting something in the arts in particular with this. So I feel like, as a person in the community who was there when this was put down, I saw the struggle she went through to get this done, I think you guys need to support it 100%. It's really wonderful. It was a really bonding thing at a time when we needed it in this community, and we still need it, and even more in some ways. So I just think it's a beautiful expression of love and kindness, and it's what the ancient art of communications with regards to the arts is all about. I know that, I see some commissioners who are there, and I don't know anyone who was in the room who was at the City Council meetings at the time when it happened, but I saw how it happened. And so if you guys come behind her, I think that other people would join, including some of these funders that we've all been working with and benefited from over the past few years. I really hope that that's the intention of this commission, because I've also seen how this commission is not known in the community a lot. I get to see some of you guys walking through, and I know you're putting on plays and you're running museums and you're doing stuff like that. And I, you know, I work with Art Walking, with the Vallejo chapter of the Slanta County Arts Council, which I'm here for another issue on that, too. But I just, I just think it's such a wonderful thing. Anything you can do to support Mrs. Scari Sawande in this process would be, it's like a force multiplier, because she's, she has an amazing head for what brings us together. And I just really, I think it's a great blessing, a really good thing in our community, and I just love you guys for considering it. And thank you, Mrs. Scari, for bringing this to us, to all of us.
Thank you for that comment. I think we agree.
Right. It was.
So I put forward the motion, I believe.
I'm very happy to second that motion, yes.
Chair Wise motioned, and Commissioner Allen seconded that this commission, Community Culture Arts Commission, approved the concept of a Black Lives Matter mural designed by youth, the youth of Vallejo, to be placed on a city-owned building. Call for the vote. Chair Wise?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Thorson?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Pass is five to zero.
One, thank you for the blessing. Once you get to know me, you'll know I'm a big crybaby. His phone call was unexpected. Thank you for the blessing. Asha.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, I do also just want to take one quick opportunity because of some of our colleagues who are here right now. There is a broader concept that was brought up in that conversation about murals in the city in general, and I would personally, I don't know exactly how inner commission work, intra-commission working together can work, but I think there's a real opportunity to work with the City Beautification Committee to identify more spots of your murals for the broader question here, beyond the concept of this specific mural, that I would personally love to do, and I wonder if we could work together, and I want to just plant that because there is a real perfect opening between that and our next subject.
Through the chair, Chairman Wise, if in fact you want to schedule a meeting, a joint meeting, with Representative of the Beautification Commission as well as the Sister City Commission, that's who's in the audience right now, Sister City Commission, that can be scheduled perhaps in the fall, after we talk with their chairperson, staff.
I think that would be great.
As well as, yes, Councilmember Mattias has been, his idea as well.
Just a quick note, which I failed to mention in my update. So the Economic Development Commission, as part of its work plan, has identified potentially scoping a art event. And so one of the things that we directed staff to help coordinate was a joint meeting with your commission to not just brainstorm that idea, but also put together some recommendations for council around it. So, sorry about that, but just wanted to include it.
That's, that's great news. Cool. Okay. With all of that, thank you for your patience. Let's move on to item B, the placement of the, how is it pronounced?
Onagawara. Yes, I believe the staff for the commission is here to make a presentation, as well as other members of the Sister City Commission.
Good evening, Chair Wise and commission members. My name is Eric Zomp, and I am staff support to the Sister City Commission and the executive assistant to Mayor Andrea Source. And tonight, what is before you is a recommendation for the placement of the refurbished onagawara. And there's a story that goes with this. And we have a sister city of Akashi, Japan, and the sister city of Akashi has been incredibly generous with their gifts to the city of Vallejo, to the people of Vallejo. And the onagawara and the Japanese garden that we're here to discuss today is just one of several of the gifts. There's a clock that is outside in the front of City Hall, and that came from them. There's also a painting that is over the stairwell as you go outside of council chambers. And what we have before us today is a decision about where to place the refurbished onagawara. And Manny, do you have the slides? Yeah. Okay. All right. And today, my colleagues, we have Pelton Stewart, who is from the Sister City Commission, we have Rick Wyrick from the Beautification Commission, we also have Jean Cherie, who is the artist, and they will be available to make comments and answer questions. And in 2003, next slide, please, Manny. This city of Akashi, in order to celebrate the 35th anniversary of our sister city relationship, they gifted us with a Japanese garden. It had some really fantastic plant specimens. There's currently still out there a diadar. It's a sort of a weeping cedar tree, and it's absolutely gorgeous. And there was a cherry tree, a number of other plants, and sort of the centerpiece of this was this piece of sculpture. And it was the onagawara, which is oni, meaning ogre. It was to ward off the evil spirits. And while it was on display, we unfortunately had somebody vandalize that piece of art. And all during, I will say this with great respect and understanding that we were in a difficult time, that during the bankruptcy years, there were probably some things that were not given as much attention. And when this piece of art was vandalized, we had a member of the Sister City Association who rescued those pieces of the onagawara and held on to it until recently. And, next slide, please, Manny. So we have this piece of art that was vandalized, and we were in a position where this garden was in a state of disrepair. And we knew that there was, at the time, two years ago, an imminent trip planned by the, from visitors of Akashi. And it would look really bad for us as a city, a sister city, to have our sister city representatives come here and to see this garden in a state of disrepair. So with, with the work of some volunteers, public works, the commission members. That we were pulled together to try to bring this garden back to life. So what we have before you is a question of where to put this refurbished, refurbished onagawara. Next slide, please, Manny. You can see, this is what the refurbished piece looks like. And, next slide? Can you go back? In your report, there was a picture that showed what the onagawara looked like when it was shattered. Anyway, there it is. Yes. Okay. So, I lost my place here. All right. All right. So in the plan, it's an outdoor plan, and if you, you can see, there's this little tiny blue box. Unfortunately, the plan that's in front of you is on a great big plotter-sized piece of paper, so you could see that much better. And it doesn't, this, what you have in your packet and what's here on the screen doesn't exactly do it justice, but there's a little tiny blue box in the lower right corner of that plan, and that's where the proposed placement outdoors of the onagawara is. And the Japanese garden, if you don't already know, it's between the Vallejo Room and City Hall. That was the original placement of the onagawara. Anyway, so once this piece was refurbished through the great skills of Ms. Jean Cherie, we were concerned, or the commission members were concerned, members of the association members were concerned, that the onagawara might be vandalized again. Now, through the restoration process, which actually wasn't a restoration, it was really a whole reconstruction, the piece that was reconstructed is made of reinforced concrete. So it should be, for the most part, impervious to vandalism and should stand up to the elements. However, there is always the concern that it could be vandalized again. So given what was presented in the report, the decision before you today is to decide whether we place the onagawara back outside in the Japanese garden where it was originally intended, or if the onagawara should go inside, whether it's inside City Hall or in front of the Vallejo Room, to keep it safe. The recommendation is to place it where it was originally placed, because that is what the gifters intended. So at this point, I do believe that is all I have to say today, and if you have any other questions, feel free.
Through the chair. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I've been on the commission long enough, and I know Vice Chair Vidor remembers the first time this came around. So I'm glad, and also, I believe Jean Cherie, the artist, will be able to speak for herself. I'm glad that a local artist has actually been engaged to do, as you said, not the restoration, but completely refiguring this in a form that, though not in as fragile a state as it was, but in concrete that hopefully will survive outdoors. It sounds like today, what we're meant to do is make a recommendation on the location to replace, to put it back out there. I availed myself of the few minutes before the commission, I got here to just walk down the steps and look at the garden, and noticed that there's a lot of other things that are missing, the names of the, well, as you said, the cherry tree's gone, there's a lot of plants that are no longer there. I would like to also make the recommendation that whenever this does get put back in place, because the artwork has already been created, that we contact, and again, Pelton is here to represent the Sister City Association, that we would work with the Sister City Association to invite the delegation from Akashi, and since you represent at least the mayor's office, if it wouldn't be overstepping our bounds, to make a recommendation to the City Council and the mayor's office to have a formal apology. It wasn't our fault, but it happened on our watch, and there's a big thing about saving face, and I love the idea that we can acknowledge, okay, this happened, this is why we can't have nice things, but we're trying to do our best to literally cement over this accident of the past and go forward. So again, I don't know if that's appropriate today to discuss that, but I think moving forward, I'd like this to just be part of the discussion that this group that's assembled today, that we don't all go back to our separate corners. So when you get what you want from us today, I would love that this commission, whether I'm on it or not after December, is still a part of that, and that there's a process of bringing everybody back together to really feel good about this and say that this is how art can heal. Thanks.
I would just like to add to that. I also, I think there's a version of that that we can do that really feels as true as possible to the spirit of a sister city initiative in and of itself, to show like, look, you brought us this, you know, misfortune hit it, and then we worked with our community, and as a sister city, we brought in our Vallejo artists to do it, and I think there's a way to do that that is quite beautiful and that speaks to the concept of sister cities in the first place.
Through the chair, we do have speakers, so perhaps we'll take the speakers and then the commissioners can make comments.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, we do have four in-person speakers. The four in-person speakers are First Pelton Stewart, followed by Rick Wyrick, Jerry Downs, and then I believe, Jean, did you want to speak, too? Okay, so you'll close it out. Pelton, come on up.
Thank you, Manny. All the commissioners, professional staff, the city, I want to thank you for allowing me to give you a little background, and I'll start with, we paid for that repair. And I speak, we paid, the local citizens, all volunteer. And I speak for, we paid, the local citizens, all volunteers, through the Vallejo Sister City Association that raised the money to repair it. And, just so that you're aware, we replaced the clock that was out there. Because when they gave it to us, it was the early version of a solar clock. And when it went out, the question was, does the city pay for it? Or does the Sister City Association, which is a group of volunteers, 501(c)(3), and we were told that we would have to take on that responsibility. We have a bell, one of our sister-cities has a bell factory in it, half a million-dollar bell that's waiting to come to Vallejo. We're trying to figure out if we could, in fact, accept that gift. So that variable has to be in consideration. And the great work that Asari does on that, and has done, I was one of those people out there volunteering, you know, we need to include the variables of how to maintain it. And that's what we decided, that we were going to replace that. We had a number of candidates, like when we put the anniversary pole on the waterfront, the company that we chose for that was out of Venetia. So we wanted to get local artists, and we were fortunate to have this wonderful lady to step forward and assist us with it that is based here. But those variables, when it comes down to the bottom line, price, she really did us a great favor, getting in on our limited budget. But I do want to make sure that you're aware that that's a variable we need to take into consideration. Also, because we don't have a big budget for any kind of repairs and replacing of the placements that would tell you the type of tree and the background on those individual trees that are around that area, those variables, we take into consideration when we put together our little budget that we have, which by the way, September 27th is our dinner option, commercial here. And the only other variable I wanted to add is, the reason that I'm at this table is because, I grew up in San Francisco, my family couldn't afford to buy in San Francisco. We bought here because this place reminded us of San Francisco in terms of its diversity. But there was something missing. And what was missing, I concluded, was how Vallejo values its diversity. And I kept saying that, and people said to me, well, what are you doing about it? And that's how I got involved in Sister City, as showing, I'm giving back, trying to change and show that Vallejo values all the cultures that make up this community. And certainly, the various commissions are doing, and what we're putting before you now, and we're willing to roll up our sleeves and help Asari with her project, and certainly we're going to continue on our sister-city projects on behalf of our community.
Thank you.
Okay, Rick Wyrick?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the time. Just wanted to give you a quick recap. The mayor's office approached me back in September of '23, when they knew the Akashi event was going to possibly happen. And they asked if the Beautification Commission would be interested in working with the Sister City Commission on this refresh of the Japanese garden, which I put forth, I was chair of the commission at that time, and I put it forth to the commission, and they very enthusiastically said, yes, we did want to work with the Sister City Commission. So Pelton and I got together, I recruited Jean Cherie, the sculptor, and the arborist, Sarah Nichols, and the four of us, we walked the entire site to see what could be done, what couldn't be done. And with the primary repair of the onigawara being very, very important to us all, in that instance, I put a budget proposal to the Sister City Commission back in December of '23. It was approved in '24. And we're basically ready to go with the landscaping. We've got the plants selected, Sarah's done a great job with design, she and Jean have cooperated together on working with the design, with Pelton and me. And so we're basically ready for shovels in the ground, but we want, but your commission, at the request of the city manager, has got to decide the placement. We will work from there and get going. There's some trees we have to redo, and one of the things we did want to do, and Pelton thought it was a good idea, is we kind of wanted to tie the top of the City Hall to the Japanese garden, since it goes down the stairs. So if you're familiar, there is a big square empty planter there. So what Jean and Sarah and I came up with is we want to incorporate that into the existing Japanese garden. So what the plan is, is put a Japanese yushino there with dwarf zelias and Japanese anemones, and then put, you know, the plaques are all going to, and with all of this, all the little identification plaques are going to be done by Fast Signs, we've already talked to them about it. So it could ended up looking very nice, but still in the concept of a Japanese garden, which is very simple. So we hope you will expedite this process as much as you can, and encourage city council to approve it. So that when it is invited, they can come and see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Jerry Downs.
Thank you, I'm just a fan. So, thank you all for doing what you're doing. My only comment about it is that, as an artwork, looking at it on the ground is not the way we look at it. It's not the way we're looking at it here, and it's not the way it should be seen. It should be, it's a very confrontational piece, that's the idea. So when you look at it, it like, like a pedestal, or whatever, but the thing on the thing kind of invites, you know, vandalism. So just, but giving the artwork its presence is kind of the whole point. And I'm sure for the sister-city, that's an orientation that they hold. So putting it on the ground is kind of disrespectful, just in my art world. But in any event, that's all I have to say. Thank you all very much, and I thank you all for what you're doing. All of this, it's a good education in what's required to move anything. So my compliments to you all. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker, Jean Cherie, come on up.
Thank you. I should have gone before Jerry, because when, looking at the space where it was located, where the onigawara was located outside, it had been placed on the ground. And that did not seem right to me, as a guardian, as a oriental gargoyle, so to speak. It was meant to be guarding, and on the ground was not the place. So I suggested that it be put on a pedestal, and you haven't been able to see the scale of this thing. So what you were looking at in the picture, the second picture, was like this big, but then it has these things that go out from it, and it's on top of. So it really needs the space outside where it was, and to go in and to complete the whole garden, it just, it wants to be there, wants to be back home. And when I saw the pieces, I thought that I would be able to glue them back together again, and then discovered that there were pieces missing. So I ended up having to re-sculpt the missing parts and make a mold of the whole thing. And then, instead of ceramic, like it was, I cast it in cement. And it is reinforced, and it's quite sturdy. I also think that having it on the ground was kind of a, almost a temptation, or made it feel disrespected. And on the pedestal, it would be more difficult to swing at, too. So there it was. So I really would love to see it back in the garden where I think it belongs. And Public Works has seen, and we've spoken to them about what the plinth, or the pedestal would be, and they're in agreement with that, too. So, thank you.
Commissioner Allen, you have a comment?
Just, well, I had a question, but I think you answered it. You, your, sorry, Jean Cherie, the artist, your suggestion is that it would be on a plinth, not placed on the wall behind the garden, vertical, but you would want it out in the garden on a plinth that Public Works would make, and it would be set on top of that? Is that? Yeah, I just wanted just to get clarification, because I wanted to make a suggestion that was in the artist's vision.
The original location in the garden was, and Rick has that on his plans, was not right in the middle. It came out from the wall about, it could be about a foot.
Yeah.
And then the width of the, of the actual plinth that it would go on would be about almost 20 inches. So it's a substantial thing, but it would basically be against the wall again.
Okay. My question about the height of the plinth, and I don't mean to get in the weeds on this, but we went through this as a commission for the genius sculpture, and I know that Doug was, anyway. It was much higher than a lot of people thought the plinth was going to be, in order to keep the statue safe, because a lot of people didn't want that statue put back up. They said it was a depiction of the devil, or it was, there was a lot of controversy at the time.
Yeah.
But if you've seen, the plinth has been defaced, but you can't, it takes a lot of effort to scale 10 feet of a sheer plinth to get to the top of it to deface the artwork. But you're talking about something that's just about eye level?
I would like to see it so that the face, the actual oni, would be just above eye level, so, so let's just say, it would be about here. So it'd make the plinth, oh boy, it's, it's a whole, the whole thing has these things that go out from the side, but it's also on a piece. So the piece below is actually like this.
Yeah.
So I was visualizing the pedestal to be about this way, kind of more or less between three and a half to four feet, I think.
It's my understanding, they're usually on the corner of a house, at the pinnacle or the apex of the edge of a house facing outwards, to ward off evil spirits, right? But yours is really about a presentation of the artwork in a respectful manner in the midst of the garden. Okay.
Yeah, so practically speaking, it does need to go in the garden. And I don't see any other place that it would be involved or part of the garden if it was designed or reconfigured to go high. Yeah. I don't think that the height is, I don't, I think that this is a respectful height for it to be presented.
Understood. Last question, I promise.
I'm sorry.
The concept of, I probably mispronouncing it, kintsugi, the, where you, a broken piece of pottery is put back together, and usually with gold or platinum or something. Again, we have metal thieves that will literally steal letters off the side of the city hall. So I appreciate the fact that you didn't do that, you didn't keep the cracks. Is that correct? It's all?
That's correct.
All whole, okay.
Yes, because there, one, one whole section of the face was gone.
Right.
Yeah, and I didn't have that, my budget didn't have gold included in it.
I'm shocked. Okay, understood.
That would have been fun, but...
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Vidor?
Thank you. I did, I did want to bring up the cultural aspect of the onigawara and the Japanese garden, and where it usually stands, and you're right, it's on top, it's usually on top of the highest point of a roof. It's, I think that, aside from thinking about where we might want it, I think we really need to think about where the Japanese contingency would want to see it, since they gifted it to us. And as they, as it is an outside piece, and it is meant to ward off evil spirits from the outside, I think it's very important that we put it back outside where they had wanted it. With the kintsugi, it doesn't necessarily have to be real gold. And my, and my question would be, what, what would the Japanese sister-city group feel about recreating it as opposed to the wabi-sabi of it, you know? So wabi-sabi is the idea in Japanese culture of the imperfectness of everything, and that everything is imperfect. And that's why, instead of throwing things away, they repair things. Often, those things are ceramic, and that's what they do with the gold, and that's the kintsugi that he's talking about, and that's where you, you basically glue things back together. But you highlight where they were broken, so that everybody can see that, because there is imperfection in the world. I like the idea of the plinth outside, where people can't get to it, but the other option, I don't know if this would be possible, would be to hang it on the wall as well, which would be more equivalent to how it's placed in Japan, in a Japanese home or a Japanese garden, would be high up on a wall or at the top point of a roof. And I just think that it's important to understand what the Japanese, how the Japanese feel about this, and what they, how they would want to see it, so that they are respected when they come and they see it re-hung.
Okay, through the chair, Mr. Pelton Stewart has some comments that he'd like to make.
Thank you. First, I want to say that there was some discussion with some members of the Japanese community here, and representatives when they've come in the past. We were there last year, in fact, the delegation went to Japan. The original setup included a bench and some other art around, just so that you're aware. And the concept that came up and was discussed at the sister-city level was similar to what we have in the area between the Vallejo Room and the McLaren Room, where you have some artwork there that can move. So when you talk about the placement, we even talked about that concept, also the concept of putting it right in next, as you enter the City Hall building at the ground level, of placing it in there. So there's a number of variables that were discussed, and the preliminary comments that we had from the Japanese Americans and some members of the Japanese delegation from their embassy here was very general, none of them were around when it was originally in place. And the understanding that I got was, because they gave it a gift to us, and they asked us to respect their culture and do the best that we can in placing it that works for us. So it's really the call, as I said, of the city council here. And we'll be willing to continue to assist and raise money if needed to place it wherever it's, the council decides.
Thank you.
Before you this evening, is a recommendation where to place the sculpture, either inside or outside. You've heard from members of the Sister City Association, the Beautification Commission, as well as the artists who repaired it. And I think that is the charge of this commission this evening. And they were, in the report that was in the packet, it describes the different options. So if you look at that, and if there aren't any other questions, entertain a motion where this commission would recommend that the sculpture be placed.
I do have a question. There was a note about lighting in here, that I was unsure if that was to us to decide if we were meant to recommend additional... if we were meant to recommend additional lighting or not. Personally, I think with an issue of vandalism, I kind of think additional lighting is, it can kind of cut both ways, but I think perhaps additional lighting at night just calls more attention to it. You disagree there? I've seen some, some shaking heads, which is making me change my mind, because I trust those people. I've known, you know, we know each other, we've known each other for so long. Cool. If it is, if the thought is that additional lighting would help discourage the vandalism, then I think it is a great idea to recommend additional lighting.
So the, what was in the document from Eric is that recommending additional lighting or no additional lighting, and place on ground level or on a pedestal, place the statue, I don't want to slaughter the names, so I'm calling the sculpture, indoors on a platform, but it's not consistent with the intent of the original gift. So, again, in, in the packet of information, it's, what does this commission recommend? Eric has comments.
Yes, through, through the chair, Mr. Y. Rick was diligent in his research, and he found a many years old photo that will show you where the original Anagawara was. And if I may approach, you can pass it around?
So while commissioners are reviewing that, would one of you like to explain what they're looking at, besides?
This is taken from the original dedication with the Japanese delegation, and also the, the city, the Beautification Commission, the Art Commission, and I believe Tom Barti at the time was Vice Mayor, he was all there. What you're looking at is from the back, from the stairs above it, and the Anagawara was on a plinth that was only about seven inches tall, and only about seven inches wide, so it was a bit narrow and a bit short. But that's what it was. You can see the two people on there are, yes, right there, they're, they're right there at the Anagawara, and there's the bench there, which we are proposing to change, to move it further away, so that you could sit and look at the Anagawara, rather than cuddle up next to it. So I don't know if that helps you all, but that's about the location of where it is, and, but it would be a much bigger plinth. The actual, also just for your edification, from the bottom of the ceramic plaque with all the names on it and everything, to the very top of the Ani, the mask, the devil, it's about 44 inches. So the plinth could be adjusted in height and width according to what's needed. And we did meet with Nick in the Public Works Department, and he's seen it, so, and how it's assembled, and so he said he could do it either inside or outside. So that's just for your edification.
Thank you. Well, personally, I wonder, I realize there's a lot of room for variations in this, so perhaps, I wonder if the thing to do perhaps is we could give some, some possibilities, and we could all vote on those possibilities, give via roll call, and then to determine. I would like to suggest, if I may, first, a placing it outside with additional lighting on a tall plinth. And
Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion by Chair Y., seconded by Vice Vidor, that, I'm going to try to pronounce it. Yeah, Anagawara.
Yes, sure.
Be placed outside, probably near the vicinity of where it was, with additional lighting, and on a plinth. Roll call? Pardon me? Pedestal, okay.
Can, can we also say that the, that it's going to be taller than what it was before?
Yeah. A, with a, at a taller height than previously.
Okay, so the motion is to place the Anagawara on a pedestal, outside in the garden, in the close proximity where it was previously, but at a higher height than what it was with additional lighting.
I believe that's correct. Through the chair, are you okay with that as a friendly?
Yes, absolutely, fully of team.
Amendment?
Okay, right, so it was moved by Chair Y., seconded by Vice Chair Vidor. Roll call, Chairman Y.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Hi.
Commissioner Thorson?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Passes five to zero. Thank you very much for your work, and please come back to this commission in the future with updates.
And again, would love, Eric, is that your? Rick. Would love to work together with the Beautification Committee in the near future. Okay, next, moving on to the next one, California Arts Council Cultural Districts Grant Program. If you could receive an update on the grant application to the California Arts Council to designate the city of Vallejo as a state-designated cultural district.
I was making notes. So the next item is the California Arts Council Cultural District Grant Program, and I believe that Carmen Slack is on the line, will provide an update.
Hi, this is Carmen. Let me see if I can, I don't know if I can get my video on, but if I can't, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. So, anyway.
I just invited her to become a panelist, so she should be able to start her video. Carmen, please unmute yourself and turn on your video.
Mute. I'm unmuted, but now I can't find you guys. Okay. I'm unmuted, but I can't find my video. Do you hear me? No?
Yes, we hear you.
All right. Well, I can't find my video, but here I am. Anyway, do you have any questions, or do you need any information? We all three are here, actually. TJ, me, and Christina.
Through the chair, Carmen, what's needed for a presentation by this commission is for you to provide an update. I know that Commissioners Vidor and Allen met with Solana County Arts Council on this project, and I know that Christina sent me an update of the steps that were taken. So if you could just go over those for the public, knowledge of what has been taken to get this grant application to the state that it's in, and then after that, the commission may make a recommendation that the council, that the city council approves the application request, the appropriate city staff to sign off, especially for the land use.
Okay. So I'm, I'm wondering if I could get the other two people that I'm working with on now. I mean, can we do this? Because I have, we have some more information. But I, I mean, what exactly do you need? I know that we have done a survey with the entire city and adjoining area, and we have done a, all the things that the California Arts Council required. We've met with the California Arts Council. We've done everything except had the agreement signed, and also, you know, done the final things. We've done everything that they required. I mean, is there a specific thing that you wanted to know?
If I may, perhaps Christina can, if she's available, go over the, she sent me an email on Friday, and it, and it has the dates of the presentation and the outline of everything that was currently done. That's what I would like for the commission to hear.
Okay.
To see how much work has been put into your effort.
Okay, Chris, I think that she's here to tell you. Christina, are you there? Oh my gosh, okay. Good, here she is. All right. Here she is.
Hi, does hear me?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Hi, everybody. Okay, so just a little bit of an update on what we've done so far. Like Carmen mentioned, we've been working on the application. It is due August 7th, so it is quickly approaching. We have done the required community-wide survey, gathering input for creating a cultural asset inventory, and this is required for the application. It included an in-person convening that we held at the JFK Library Joseph Room on July 17th, and it also had an online component, so that online survey went live July 8th, and it was open for approximately two weeks and closed on Sunday, July 20th. So that was open to the public, and we received some input there. We, in addition to that survey, so that we can collect this cultural asset inventory, like Carmen mentioned also, we've also been in contact with California Arts Council staff for that application support, and participating in their webinars regarding this program. And we're in communication with city staff, looking for sign-on for partnership. Let's see. There are a few other things involved, just requiring letters of support from other community members, so we're working on that, and creating an Excel spreadsheet that collects all the cultural asset inventory. That's still being worked on, and finalizing the application for submission by August 7th.
We also have been in touch with several people that are involved with what we're doing, and we, we know that most, I mean, everybody has supported this, because everybody who is, and their vision is the arts and culture in Vallejo are involved, and that is who we basically are, you know, reaching out to. So that's who we work with, and we just want to make sure that the city has their official arts and cultural district with the state. I mean, we already have one with the city, but it's a little different. When we have it with the state, then the whole government notices, and we get more information, we get more grants, we get more support. So that's what we really need here in Vallejo. So that's what we're working towards.
If I may, I have yet to hear what the parameters of this district are. Could I ask that question, please?
Well, we're going to be asking you, actually, for the parameters that you have, and then we're going to be, as we're working with two people from your group there, that they're going to help us determine the parameters. So right now, that's one of the last things we're doing, is we're asking you what the original parameters are for the city, because I think it's going to be similar, you know, I really do. And it may even be the same, who knows? But I think that what we need is what we have now, you know, a plot, a description of what the parameters now for the city, the city cultural and arts district, and then let's do one for what we've gotten from all the community that we've worked for the last several weeks on telling us what they wanted. So let's see what we get. But we can't tell you that until we get the city, actually, I think that people have a connection with your group there, with a group that could let us know what the parameters are, and in the last, in the next few days, we'll have all that, so we can send that to you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a question for the secretary. As the proposal was sent to my work email, do I now have to recuse myself from this? Because there is a difference between my job in the Planning and Development Department of the City of Vallejo and my time here on the commission. So I just need clarification on where I stand within all of this.
Can I mention something? Is that it, since there is not a lot of information other than what we've sent you, updates, I don't think you will need to recuse yourself, but I guess that would be up to whoever, you know, determines that. But since we, all we have, with all the information we have with you is what we've sent you, is updates, and the same updates go to all the commissioners, hopefully, and we, that's all that you have. All the information you have is what we have. And so do all the other commissioners.
Sorry, the issue for me is that I work for the city, and so when you send it to my, my official city email, that may preclude my being on the commission.
Through the I would
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair, we could ask the city attorney for an opinion, but my initial thought is, as a chair, as a commissioner, if you are, if you want to benefit from this project or this grant by receiving funds, both, because I noticed that you and Commissioner Allen have signed on as a, as one of the community groups. So if, in fact, you will be in line to receive funding, right now it's only $10,000, but if, if, in fact, that is the
No.
If I may, please, if that is the case, then there's a recusal, because the email was sent to the incorrect address. Hopefully you corrected that, and you're not acting as a staff person, but as a commissioner. To me, that's the difference, but you could, that's a question perhaps you should ask the city attorney's office.
Also, nobody, of the $10,000, it doesn't go to any of the, of us, none of the, of me, of, it doesn't go to the Solana County Arts Council, doesn't go to any of the commissioners, so that probably is out anyway, but yeah.
Carmen, excuse me, I'm just responding, answering a question that, that is city-related. And so
Okay.
So if the $10,000 is not going to go, not to the commission, but to any group, groups that the two commissioners groups, the Shakespeare in the Park is one of the
I see what you're saying.
One of the community organizations, and the Vallejo Niels Historic Music Museum is another community organization. The question is if they are in line to receive any funds, those organizations that they represent, they may have to recuse themselves. That is my non-legal opinion. I'm now the city attorney, but when there's money involved, that's always been the case of recusal. Councilmember Matias...
Oh, yeah.
...to address that as well.
And that's true. I, I, I agree with you and, and I understand that. But if you, if, if, when we looked at the, where the money goes and the budgeting, it can't go to any, anybody like that. That's all I was getting to. I mean, if you look at the budget, the money is $10,000, which is $5,000 a year. It doesn't go to any of the groups that are involved in signing, so that kind of covers it. But that's, that's just...
So, so sorry to cut you off. I think Councilwoman Matias has, I appreciate your time. Councilwoman Matias, I have a few things to say.
Yeah, so I think what we can do is get some clarity around who, what would be the entity...
When we, when you say "we," what do you mean "we"?
Uh, city, city staff and the, the, the staff member supporting this commission. And I can also provide support if necessary. What I mean by that is we can get some clarity to this commission and also to Ms. Slack and TJ and Christina as to who would be the entity receiving the funds. I would assume that the lead applicant would probably be receiving the funding from the state, but we can confirm that, you know, in the next couple of days. Now, when it comes...
If you read the application, it explains who gets the funds, but go ahead.
If I could ask to hold for just a, just a moment so we can have this conversation. We appreciate your input, but Councilwoman Matias is...
Now, going back to, I'm going to come back to your cultural district question and respond to that in just a second, but the genesis of my, my outreach to our state representative several months ago was to really have the Arts Council reopen the application process to give us an opportunity to apply. Highlighting Vallejo's rich cultural history and identifying it as one of potentially 15 or 16 cultural districts across the state can not only help build the capacity of the many artists and organizations that promote the arts and the cultures, in our culture in our city, but it can also be a powerful marketing tool when it comes to tourists visiting our state and look, you know, identifying Vallejo as one of those places that have much to offer in terms of what we are offering as a state. And so there would be technical assistance that would be provided by the state. We would get the $10,000. There would be co-branding, marketing opportunities made available through this process. And so from my vantage point, it's a win that can have a ripple effect across many different areas. And in fact, as part of my share out this morning, you know, I think I communicated to you guys that this morning I was on the phone with a funder and it was honestly getting to know you call and also getting to better understand, you know, not just the level of investment of that funder over the past couple of years, but perhaps what was coming down the pipe. And when I shared with them that we were in the process of applying for that designation, it was something that they were pretty happy about and that they saw as a great next step for the city to move forward. And so those are the sorts of things that, as we're going into conversations, as we're forming partnerships with different entities, you want to highlight, that we have these designations, that we've got a rich community that's doing the work, as you've just seen through this process. And so I hope that, you know, we can meet that deadline and I want to extend that, my gratitude to everyone who's been spearheading this process. Now, having said that, to your specific question around what the district should be, I think what I'm hearing from the folks on the call is that they're looking for some recommendations from this body. But what I would say is a lot of what we have, what I have seen as a resident of this community has been that we have centered our downtown area as the sort of through-line of our arts community and our culture. Now, there may be other parts of Vallejo that we may also want to highlight and include as part of our cultural district, like some other cities, I believe Los Angeles, I was looking on their website. Los Angeles has the Tokyo District as a cultural district. San Francisco has Filipino-specific cultural district. And so I think it's up to this body and also the folks on the phone, leveraging data that has been shared out by the public to identify whether it's just the downtown area or if there are other pockets of our city that should be a part of that application. I'm not going to weigh in to that, but I do think we have enough data points from your own experiences and from what has been shared by the public that we can include in our application. And so those are my three cents.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner, Councilmember Matias. When this was brought before, the commission as well as Solano County Arts Council was looking at the downtown and possibly the arts and entertainment district that was outlined in the downtown specific plan, the discussions, my understanding has been maybe to broaden that somewhat. Other areas of the, of the City of Vallejo, I don't know if that was taken under consideration at this point. However, I have a question for Carmen. Since you were very knowledgeable about this, if in fact the City of Vallejo, or I should say, when the City of Vallejo gets the designation, can it be amended in the future to add other areas of the city? Or does it have to be just that one area? Can it be expanded?
I think that they are pretty, I think that they want to know where it is, but I think that they would be amenable to some type of adjustment. I don't think, I, I actually wanted to try and see what other areas there were. There, there seems as though the downtown areas, the historical area, and that's what the city originally wanted, but there are other areas that are, you know, that are, that want to be in it, I'm sure. And I would, I would be open for that, for sure.
So a follow-up question...
So I think that it's, I think that it could happen.
So...
Yeah, I don't know for absolutely sure, but I could find out, basically, yes.
So a follow-up question, when you met with the public, the public outreach in the library, what was discussion asked to, was it just getting information from the artists or was there a discussion about a particular location at that time?
Um, we, Christina, could you maybe help me with this? But I did see, I did read a few of those, but some of them said that they, that the certain areas might be interesting, different areas than the downtown area. What did you hear, Christina?
Yeah, the, so the in-person meeting, or it wasn't really a meeting, but it was a convening, we invited the public to share what they thought were the cultural assets of the community. So we asked several questions, like, you know, where, we're kind of like, where do you go to find arts and culture? Where do you experience arts and culture? What do the, you know, what does the history bring to the culture of the community? Who are the organizations or places that bring arts and culture to the community? So there were questions like that to identify these different resources that we have, because of course we, you know, TJ and myself and Carmen could put together a list, but we wanted to hear from the public. So that's what...
Yeah, and it wasn't artists, actually. There, there were not very many artists, actually, that, that, that answered these questions, which I was kind of surprised at. They're mainly just people that were at the library, and this was an in-person convening. Now, we had a survey online, right? But my battery's running low, so if I die, then Christina's in charge. But the, the, the issue is that there was a lot of people that weren't artists, that were just people that were in the community, that were at the library, and they came and they wanted to talk about what they liked. So that's, that's true. So that some of these people that were online were artists, so that sent in online surveys. So it wasn't just artists, but we do, you know, what, we do want this to be a focus of arts and culture. But of course, if you're asking for a public convening, like the California Arts Council requires, then you have to have a public convening. And the public is not all artists, so that's what happened.
Thank you for that clarification. Just one other follow-up question. So in the application as drafted now, do you have a designated location? Or as I heard, I think I heard you say that you're asking the commission for designated, for boundaries of designated location? Or, or is there a designated location already in the application that you have drafted?
We're asking for the designated location from the city, and then we are, we're going to take the information from the surveys and make the final designated commission in the next few days.
Commissioner Allen, you've, you've been trying to talk for a long time. Real quick, before, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Very aware of the, it is almost eight o'clock, it is, we are on a tight deadline to pass this. I think we all are very in favor of the theory of this, so I would just like to ask Commissioner Allen and Vice Chair Vitor, do you have any reservations about this process? You have had a chance to be much more a part of it than anyone else in this commission.
Does that to me or to Vice Chair?
Okay. So very quickly, mindful of the time, and thank you, thank you, Steph Taylor, for clarifications. And in full transparency, I'm also signatory to a letter that they have mentioned. I'm also the executive director of the Vallejo Naval Historical Museum, which was one of the cultural assets that was mentioned in originally the downtown arts and entertainment district, as it's already been mapped out, how the CCRC has defined it, how Main Street has defined it. And we felt comfortable within those parameters. Having said that, and I think the Solano County Arts Council had talked about this in terms of diversity, geographic diversity, and we're not just talking about the arts, we're talking about the performing arts. There's other theaters like the Myra, the Bay Area Stage, that are outside of the downtown corridor. So again, if this can be expanded, great, but, and I think Councilmember Matias said only $10,000, and that's $5,000 one year, $5,000 next year. Concentrating the mind wonderfully by focusing on what's already been litigated, what has already been a P-bid, and how the city already thinks in terms of cultural assets, I think that that was what we had intended. I can't speak for Councilman, so in terms of answering your question, I feel confident in what their vision is, and I fully support it, so much so that outside of that, I was a signatory to it, saying that the museum, though we may benefit, in which case I would have to recuse myself, full transparency, but it sounds like the money would be going to the California Arts Council, to the Solano County Arts Commission, and that would then be disseminated to support a downtown arts district, right? So unless that's not true, then I wholeheartedly 100% support it.
Vice Chair Vitor.
Thank you. Through the chair. I, I like the downtown Vallejo specific plan area, which I sent out as the main location, but I also think that an expansive view of the arts district is, is a good thing. But identifying those locales, I think, would take a lot more time. And if there's the opportunity to expand it from the downtown arts district at a later date, I think that that would be the most prudent thing to move forward.
Yes, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to say on the subject?
Through the chair, we do have a member of the public who would like to make a comment.
I would love to hear the member of the public.
TJ Walkup, please unmute yourself.
Hi. Oh, sorry about that, you guys. Yeah, I'm a member of the public, but I'm also on the Vallejo chapter of Solano County Arts Council. Forgive the oneis there. What I'm excited about is the history that we've already established over 11 years with just the Art Walk, plus, and this is all in that district area, plus what's happened over the past 30 years in the arts here, including a lot of local heroes rising to start art and things like that. And we've got this long history of, of artists rising from here and cultural things rising from here that are really, really important. And we're not a, our position as a council, I can't speak for all the councils, because there's multitude of them in the state as well, but I can say that we've always wanted to make sure that we're promoting the best of, and when I mean the best of, I mean like everyone, basically, who's in the arts in Vallejo and in Solano County. So with those relationships, establishing the map earlier that the city did is one thing. Even doing the Arts and Architecture Walk videos, 24 of them, they still play and promote the city at the Ferry Building and, you know, all over the place in Vallejo. You guys have seen when you walk in, and you hear my wife's voice in some of them too. We're really proud to have been able to collaborate with the arts and the cultural groups in town and in that downtown area. I think we just need to establish the fact that these relationships have been built over 20 some odd years or more, and we have so much richness from here and history from here, artists rising to prominence in California and around the world, that if we just do this as a continuation and get this signed off by you guys and get this signed off by whatever interested parties can do it before, actually, the vote, before the vote with the council, you guys can recommend to the council, but we need to move forward pretty fast, because the date's already coming up and we've done the hard work already to get this going. And we do have to pour through and get the best of what the citizens asked about, because that's what the grant requires. So we always have to go by what the grant requires and go from the hierarchy that we're under, which is ANEA, California Arts Council, Solano County Arts Council, Vallejo Chapter of Arts Council, and this is what we do, cultural things. So I hope that everybody and the liaison to the council, Matias, will support us in this effort. And as we go forward and finish this thing off, so we can really move it, because that means it opens us up to grants for all of the interested parties in the area. And so the $10,000 is a pittance, and I'm sure we'll use responsibly with transparency. But I, I, I hope that we are all in concordance with this, because if we get in concordance with this and we establish this, we have five years to go to funders who have that, look at that designation, say these people are serious about bringing people to Vallejo to enjoy it and to gain part of the experiences and richness that we have culturally here. My time is up, thank you.
All right. Through the chair, then perhaps to move this forward, I think there are two things I heard that this commission is being asked to do is, one, is the boundaries, that's one, is my understanding. And so it could be the downtown area that's in the downtown specific plan with the option to expand. I don't know how, but if, if there could be language that's incorporated in the grant for that, as well as recommending that the city signs off on the, that the city manager designate the appropriate staff to sign off on the land use portion of the application. I know there was a draft letter that was signed, but in speaking with the director, until it's been approved, she wasn't, you know, wasn't comfortable in, in signing. And so I spoke with her and let her know that was coming before the commission this evening. So I think, unless there is something else, I think those are the two actions by this commission on this particular item.
Did you have something you wanted to say? Vice Chair Vitor.
Through the chair, I believe that the Planning and Development Director would like a direction from the city manager.
I think I said that, I think if I didn't, I said through the city to allow her to sign, that's what I thought I said.
I think, again, I don't mean to overstep anything here, a step, I believe, it seems like there's some amount of consensus that it makes the most sense to just start with the current downtown district as they are, as they are defined, to keep it simple with the option of expanding. the option of expanding further. I would personally like to make a motion that we recommend this go forward, and do sign off for the city manager to approve, under the idea of it being along the current arts and entertainment boundaries.
It was moved by Commissioner, by Chair, Chairman Wise, seconded by Commissioner Thorson, that the commission recommends that the downtown specific plan area, arts and entertainment district, be the boundaries initially with the option to expand at a later date, and that the city manager provides direction, give direction to the planning and building person, director, building development director, to sign off the letter if appropriate. Roll call? Chairman Wise?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much for everyone's time. Do we need to leave? It's after eight o'clock. Do we need to lock the doors, or do we keep going?
Well, it's open until, actually, until nine is when the doors close. Our meeting usually should end at eight, but we have run over. But I'll let, I will let the guard know that we are still.
On to measure, item D, measure P funding request. Review and discuss the measure P ad hoc subcommittee proposal for art and culture projects utilizing measure P funds, and hopefully, if appropriate by motion, approved to present this proposal. We were going to, I'll just say, Commissioner Thorson, Commissioner Hernandez, and myself were going to present this at the last measure P meeting, and it got canceled at the last minute, which is great, because it gives us time to more fully bring this in front of everyone for approval.
Through the chair, yes. The ad hoc committee did a fantastic job of outlining a proposal to the measure P Oversight Hopefully, we'll be able to be on the September agenda, I don't know the date. As I shared with Chairman Wise, that presentations are now made by staff and not by commissioners. If you notice, the commission, the council meeting with the EDC work plan update, it was done by staff, and the commissioners are there to comment and provide answers, to respond to any questions. What I would propose, if this goes forward, that A PowerPoint be done to present to the measure P committee. I could work on it, but I would like assistance if, in fact, we move forward, because there is a format that we have to use. So those are my comments. If you want to go over the proposal, I think this is the time to do it.
Commissioner Thorson, would you mind going over the proposal?
Shall I read it?
Or you can highlight it, you know, just key points.
Okay, sure. So I will do key points. So the project addresses two of Vallejo's compelling needs, one, safer streets, intersections and crosswalks, and two, educational and leadership opportunities for Vallejo youth. There is argument using the Solano County Active Transportation Plan, talking about our need for safer streets, and some research done by the Bloomberg Foundation about asphalt art and being, enhancing pedestrian safety in particular. Some compelling research there. And so for our measure P proposal, we would like to realize a three-year timeline that involves two summers of youth camps, who would work with local educators and the Parks District to create, to design murals for sites in each Vallejo district. And so potentially, there would be three sites that would happen the first summer, and then three additional sites the second summer. Would anyone like to add anything? We can go over the project timeline.
Yeah, just to speak to the three-year aspect of it, we just thought it made the most sense, just the nature of it being a summer program, needing applications for a summer program to open up, not, you know, in the early spring, in order for families to be able to use it, things like that. We wanted to give it a full year that is just for planning, that's for community outreach, that's for working with the city council, and with, you know, various groups, including the group who called in for our previous meeting, places like Vallejo Main Street, et cetera, et cetera, and to do the work in communities, to do focus groups, to identify the right areas for them to go, and to spend that, sort of, that first whole year is a research year, essentially, followed by two years of summer camp programming to make it actually happen.
For clarification, the districts are the six city council districts.
Yes.
Just make sure.
And I do think if it is a success, if it goes well, if these programs go really well, absolutely, there would be room to then approach measure P for additional funding to continue the program, because there are certainly not just six locations in Vallejo that would benefit from this, but as a way to start the program in the name of equity for everyone in Vallejo, the easiest way to make sure that all voices across the city are heard, was to just break it along those six districts to begin.
Through the, I don't know if I need to do through the chair right now? If I'm talking to the chair? Do I need to, okay, through the chair. I wonder if we could put language in here that says it is a pilot program with the potential to continue?
Let's do it, let's add it. Let's add some pilot plan program as an amendment. But I think Commissioner Thorson did a really incredible work pulling this all together, and I think, I think it's great, and we should move it forward.
Through the chair, I would particularly appreciate, I think we would particularly appreciate some look over the budget, because that is very much preliminary, and I did the best I could, and am very open to suggestion.
Through the chair. First of all, I want to say thank you. This is an amazing proposal, so thank you. And I don't, God, I don't want to be that guy. On page 20 of what we have in front of us, the budget that you brought up, the only red flag for me, we could get in the weeds about whether this should be $10,000, this line item, or it should be 20 or whatever, there's one blank. And if you've ever been on a panel, that raises a flag of just like, either they made a mistake, they didn't put something. So the second to the last item, mural maintenance, and I think this actually speaks volumes to, we get art, it's donated to the city, we put it out there, it's damaged, and then there's no budget to fix it. And maybe part of mural maintenance could also be, whatever that amount would be, and I, again, I defer to you guys, you spent a lot of time on this, maybe that's also part of the graffiti abatement, the coating, or it's just that if, you know, something gets painted on or something, that there's a line item that the city has set aside measure P funds to offset the cost of public works having to get involved. Again, I totally am pro-union, but it's union labor, so there are really costs associated with fixing something. So as the murals are out there, hopefully for years, that that's just, you fill in a number, and I don't even know what that would be. Again, I defer to you.
Through the chair, that probably was forgotten, and I also don't know that number, but can make an educated guess.
I wonder if perhaps it would make sense, it actually would be more than this, but as an initial, you know, with the idea of it being that, is perhaps we ask for a, you know, maybe there's like a $60,000 reserve, which is $10,000 per mural, put aside as a initial reserve for maintenance, and then there can be more added to that as needed, but that is just maybe that will be put aside for a rainy day, in case anything happens to it, rather than an ongoing, and so at least there is a pool to begin with.
Through the chair. I'm looking at the budget, and right now, it's $134,500 with additional, what, $60,000, I think you're suggesting, so I'd bring it up to what, $140,500. So my question would be, if I was on the measure P committee, is how did you, the funding sources, how did you come up with these dollars amount? And so if you have a response to that, that would be helpful.
The current response is that at some points, I, so for example, with the education and the category of education, teaching artists and youth leader stipends for six sites. I did not keep the math, but I estimated, you know, paying teaching artists maybe $50 an hour for a three-hour, two-week camp, and did the math for six sites. And then some of the other dollar amounts were based on the, another proposal that was submitted, to try to figure out like a baseline of what these things might be.
And the reason I raise that, because that's going to be one of the main questions. So you have procurement of furniture, $2,000, so what's the furniture that you're procuring? So you have to know what that is. Liability insurance is liability insurance, we can get that from our risk manager, what that is. And then you talked about the stipend, so you have that. And breakfast and lunch for campers for each camp, so you, so I guess you have decided how much per meal that would be, sorta, kinda. And again, that's how they will look at this and pick through it, and so I just want to make sure that there are responses to those questions that have been thought about, just don't want, because I think I would have to be the person to present it, and you're there to respond to the questions, that we don't have the answers. And so I think we, and looking at this mobile, mobile art studio for six sites, $10,000, vehicle rental to transport art supplies, and so that's question, you know, those are the type of questions that need to be thought about, and with the response. I mean, I think you did a very good job, but then you need the background, you know, for that. I just would not like to see this not considered, because we don't have the responses.
Absolutely.
Are there any other, Vice Chair Vidor?
I just want to say how fantastic this proposal is, and well thought out. And it is just exactly what we talked about, you know, and I would really like to see this move forward. My understanding is that what we were asking for was 1% of the measure P funding, which would have equaled about $200,000, so I think this is within the budget of that. I understand the need for the breakdown of this budget, and the details on how those numbers were come by, but I do think that this is a very doable project, and I think that there are many organizations in town that would want to be part of it as well, not just the teaching artists, but also there's a youth arts camp here with the Vallejo Arts, I can't remember the, Center for the Arts. They may want to, you know, partner with this as well. So I think that this is a very doable project, and something that I would hope that the measure P committee would want to support.
Yes, it does talk about RFP in the proposal. So I think all the steps have been taken. As I said earlier, it's a good proposal, but just be prepared to answer questions, especially about the budget, because we are talking about a limited amount of dollars that measure P has. In the city council budget discussion, they talked about, perhaps, that they didn't want to use measure P to balance the budget, but they are looking for projects, and especially in economic development, this is one. Again, we want to make sure that we put our best foot forward, again, as I said, just be able to respond to possible questions.
Through the chair, if anyone on the, if any commissioner has any specific input on, oh, any specific input on any of these budget items, I would welcome your experience regarding the numbers, because that is certainly the part where I was guessing the most.
Is that, are there any other additional comments? I don't want to move this forward myself, as I, but Vice Chair Vidor?
I would like to make a motion to, what, to move this proposal forward, to make a proposal to the measure P committee, and to make an official request for the funds to create a, what is this? It's a, the Vallejo Youth Create Asphalt Art for Safer Streets.
Can I? Yeah, all right. Through the chair, we have a member of the public who would like to speak on this Melvin Cohen, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Director Taylor. My name is Melvin Cohen, and I'm the founder of Enough Housing, and the lead organizer behind the proposal entitled Rooted for Vallejo Built for Belonging. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to submit this proposal in response to the call for measure P recommendations. I submitted the final proposal and budget in good faith, after being encouraged to do so by members of this commission. As I watched tonight's discussion, I want to express concern that my proposal does not appear to be included or even referenced despite meeting the deadline, having strong institutional partners, and aligning with the very goals this commission has uplifted around equity, arts, activation, and economic revitalization in North Vallejo. I was under the impression that the proposal would at least be reviewed alongside the commission's submission, or be given the courtesy of a conversation. At minimum, I hope for the opportunity to clarify any questions or misconceptions, especially given that the event already has confirmed partners like the Solano County Health and Social Health and Social Services Department, Solano Community Foundation, the Solano Economic Development Corporation, as well as the Vallejo Chamber of Commerce, and representatives from the art community as well. I believe we share a vision to uplift Vallejo's cultural identity, to build belonging, and to bring investment into overlooked neighborhoods. I respectfully ask that this commission revisit the process by which communities submitted proposals are acknowledged and integrated. We have an opportunity here, not just to fund an event, but to see long-term belonging and collaboration in North Vallejo. I hope this proposal can be still, can still be included or discussed with integrity. I'm available to follow up directly if needed. Thank you again for your service to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Cousins, I actually, I owe you a huge apology at the moment. I, you may have noticed I was blanking when I was listing the possible organizations we would work with before, and the organization I was trying to think of in that moment was yours. We have explicitly written into this plan that we will, that you will be for that district, that we would, we thought your project seemed exactly, like, very easy to integrate into this project, and you were listed as a potential partner in this, and I apologize for not explicitly saying that, it did slip my mind, but I want you to know that we read your proposal, we thought it was great, and we felt that it was very easy to then have you be the community partner for that, for that district, when this comes. So please, I apologize for any sense of disrespect that came from my forgetting to mention that when going through it. Commissioner Thorson?
Through the chair, yes, I want to, wanted to make sure that our final budget for the Measure P would allow for those funds to go through to Enough Housing.
Can you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
I wanted to make sure that our final numbers for the proposal that we're submitting does leave enough room within that ask to submit the Enough Housing proposal in conjunction. I think that that was on the ad hoc, we did not share that, but on the ad hoc, we were considering putting both proposals through. One, the Enough Housing proposal with our recommendation, in addition to this Measure P proposal with the asphalt art. Does that seem plausible?
I just need clarification, so when you're saying housing proposal, you're talking about Mrs. Cowan's proposal, okay. Because when you're saying housing, I'm thinking housing, residential, so I forgive my confusion on that. So, but, so you're, so in this particular proposal, he, what you're, what I just heard was that Mr. Cowan would be considered for that district's representative, is what I heard you say, but now you're saying that you would like to submit a separate proposal? His proposal, instead of, he, I think his proposal needs to be vetted by this commission. I know it's been, I did send it to everyone, but if you are requesting, then he, I have to think about that, because I don't want to say yes or no, because his proposal is coming through the commission, but is it arts, is it for art, it is for arts, correct? And that housing, because I know he made a proposal for housing during the budget, I believe, so I just need clarification, and forgive me, Mr. Cowan, for not understanding the question by Commissioner Thorson.
Through the chair, apologies, I think, I think, I, I believe, and potentially, Mr. Cowan can clarify, and I'm working from my memory, the organization was Enough Housing, and they were proposing an event that was, that involved performers, visual arts, and community, community resources for a day-long event that had a trajectory that would be much greater than that.
My, my recollection here, and as I spoke, and I thought this, was that the, Mr. Cowan's proposal involved setting up a permanent mural, and so that, as part of the project, and that's why we were saying we would identify that as a location, work with you as our community partners there, and enable this to happen, and there would be the event, which we were going to have for all of these, and that would bleed into the event that you were proposing. There'd be room to go beyond that, but that, that was the idea, in terms of wrapping it into your proposal and the spirit of that, that's why we felt it was a good partner, and how I believe we had originally designated you, sort of in a footnote, as our community partner for that area.
And I'm happy to speak about the description of the event, that'll help a little bit, and clarify some confusion that it sounds like there is there. So, the, it's rooted in Vallejo Built for Belonging. It's a community-driven arts and culture activation event, designed to celebrate the rich cultural identity of Vallejo, while advancing economic revitalization, public safety, and social connection in North Vallejo. It's planned for Saturday, October the 18th, 2025, and it'll take place in North Vallejo, the Vallejo Village Shopping Center, and it'll feature live performances by local artists and musicians, interactive art installations, pop-ups, small businesses, and food vendor markets, community storytelling, and healing spaces, youth-led showcases and workshops. There'll be a justice zone, which will highlight key issues around housing, climate resilience, transportation, as well as economic equity. We would have the Solano County Health and Social Services to be able to table at the event as well, to provide healthcare resources. I'm in conversations with Kaiser as well, and the goal would be to have Kaiser's support there to table, to provide needed medical support services, and for individuals that need to get connected to public benefits, we'll have individuals to help to get individuals connected to public benefits, such as SNAP, as well, too. This event, it'll bring together community members, local businesses, and we have our institutional partners, so that's the Solano County Health and Social Services, Solano County Economic Development Corporation, the Vallejo Chamber of Commerce, and the Solano Community Foundation, and to co-create an experience that's joyful, focused on healing, and rooted in the values of equity and inclusion. And it's more than just one-day celebration, it's rooted in Vallejo, is designed to serve as a launching point for a long-term, a longer-term vision, establishing a business improvement district in North Vallejo, and that helps to support the small business community there, and investing in long-term infrastructure and belonging. And so this is to help activate that North Vallejo area through the arts.
Alright, thank, thank you for that. I think that if we go to, if we are on the Measure P subcommittee in September, I don't know if in October, we'd be ready by October. So I think by timeline, it may not be for your October event, but if in fact, the commission wants to incorporate your event within this proposal some way, they can do that, but I think the fund, if you're requesting funding for October, I don't think logistically that's going to happen through Measure P. And one of the reasons, contracts have to be drawn up, insurance, so forth, and so on, so I don't think the October is doable. But for the future, you'd answer it perhaps?
Yeah, is it that it's impossible to do? Or is it just that you believe that it's, we just can't, we can't do it? I mean, because another option could be, you know, maybe it's doing it at a later date, you know, once we identify what other dates are available?
That's what I'm suggesting, sir. That's what I'm suggesting, other dates, I'm saying October, if we meet, if, if the Measure P committee meets in September and hear us out, to have something in place by October, just time-wise, it's, I don't believe it's doable, but if you have future dates, once it's incorporated, can be done. I'm just looking at the timeline.
Yeah, so then could we still keep October the 18th? And then, should there be an issue due to just, you know, the timing becomes an issue, then we just go ahead and look at a later date for it?
It's up to the commission whether they want to incorporate your proposal within this proposal, their draft proposal or not, or if they want to recommend that to the Measure P committee, that they take your proposal as a standalone.
Vice Chair Vidor?
I would just like to speak to you through the chair, I'd just like to speak to the timeline for Mr. Cowan's understanding, that the commission and the city council pretty much does not meet in August at all, so it would not be able to be brought to the council, or the commission would not be able to speak on it in August. The next time that they will be meeting will be in September. That will take the time to just propose it, then they have to go through a vetting process with this whole proposal, which then they will have to bring back in October, which then, then has to come back to us, or it has to go to the Measure P committee, so this probably wouldn't be presented, or even funded, until January, just because of the timeline of how long it takes to get it to committee, then back to discussion, then back to the council. So just so you understand, it's not that we're saying we don't want to do this, it's not that we're saying it's not a good project. We do think it's a good project, we do think it's a wonderful idea, but the timeline makes it very difficult to get it through for any sort of project that's going to take place in October. And that's why we're requesting that you either do this one on your own, or find other funding for this particular one, and incorporate it, again, for a new iteration of this within the our Measure P proposal that we're going for, which is a three-year project, and it may include, say, at least one year of your project incorporated, or part of the whole three-year process. We don't know yet, because we haven't, we haven't discussed that yet, or the Measure P ad hoc hasn't discussed that with. But I hope that clarifies why it's so difficult to get you funding for your October event.
You know what, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the breakdown of the timeline as well, too. And if it's January, then it's January. I mean, at the time that I was given the opportunity to submit the proposal, those type of parameters weren't provided in that type of way, where I would know, okay, this is when funds would likely be submitted. So if it is January, then it's January. I mean, I think it would be helpful, you know, once we kind of know what type of parameters, like, we're working with, from that standpoint, and, but if I needed to move the date, let's say it was December, or let's say it was January, I'm definitely open to do that. It's just helpful to know that, like, now, because I would have loved to put that in the proposal.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for calling us back, calling in. Again, apologies for slipping over this. Also, I feel like I, my, my mind is, I don't know, I don't know where, but we definitely, we definitely want you, we consider you as community partners in our, in our broader project, and would be comfortable presenting as a standalone project, this specific one, which is not as integrated as, in my mind, we thought it would easily, be more easily integrated, but.
He would present his proposal.
Yes.
Not we, he would present his proposal, if it's not part of this proposal.
Great, yeah, we would, we would highly recommend you, you present your proposal. And also, I would like to say that we would love you to be a potential community partner in our other project. I think, oh, we had a motion and a second, and then, can we return to the vote?
The motion, we have Vidor moved, and Commissioner, Vice Chair Vidor moved, and Commissioner Allen seconded that the proposal as drafted be presented to the Measure P committee with the addition of saying it's a pilot project. Is that the, is that the?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Chair Wise?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Pass this 5-0.
Thank you. Now, the last item of our action calendar, the goal-setting work plan. It says Recommendation Review Proposed Budget for Work Plan Categories.
Okay, I still haven't received anything from anyone in writing. I know we discussed it here, and if someone sent something to me, I don't remember receiving it, because basically, what we discussed last, for the past couple of months, is that was outline what we wanted, right? And then, Commissioner, Vice Chair Vidor, and Commissioner Allen, as well as Commissioner Wise, had some costs, some quotes, correct? But it wasn't for everything, and I was hoping that, again, I truly recommend that you look at last week's city council meeting with the Economic Development Commission's presentation on their work plan, and see what's needed. We are a long way from what the city council would, I think would want us to do as a commission, so it needs some meat. On the bones is a good framework, but if, again, you have the entire month of August, because you're off, to think about this, and provide me information that I can compile and have it as a packet for a September meeting. So you have an entire month to work on it, and just as the proposal that you did for Measure P, something of that nature, it's, if you, if you want to do outreach, you want to outreach, and you started some of this to certain events and the costs, but what are these events? And if, you talked about training, so where's the training? It's going to be in Northern California, you know, what are those? So, things of that nature. So we'll continue it until September with the, and I am truly requesting that you do this, because I have it on the Economic Development Department's schedule to go to council, and I keep saying to be determined, to be determined, and we just need to have a proposal that everyone can, a work plan that everyone can really work, look at, that has some true definitions. Commissioner Thorson, you have a question?
Is there anything I need to do for the work plan?
Anything you need to do, you can discuss it with perhaps Chairman Wise, because you aren't here, but ideas of what the work plan is, or you can look at past commission meetings and see what was discussed. Or you can speak with any commissioner, as long as it's just no more than three of you.
Great. We will, we will do it, we're going to do it, we will do it. It will be done, it is time. We're going to move on to future agenda items. As always, inventory storage policy of artwork, continue on to the next, artist registry, continue on to the next. Continue on to the next. Are there any additional future agenda items to be added?
Sorry, through the chair. Future agenda items. Doug Darling's presentation, the video that he sent us, that Staff Chair sent to all of us. It's a very short video. We watched it, and it was from many years ago. Was the intention that while we're off in August, we were going to invite Doug Darling to come and give a presentation in September? In which case, I'd like to put that on the next agenda.
Right. I was going to...
Yeah?
What he would like to speak to is inventory storage policy of artwork. So it's already on the agenda. So what I shared with him was that because it's a request from... It's a request to do a presentation, I would add it to our September meeting.
Great. That's all I was going to suggest as well. Thank you.
Great. Then we'll move on to the information calendar. Or announcements?
Through the chair. What is the information calendar?
I don't... I don't know.
Well, that... That I will...
That was a change.
I will delete that, because that was the template. And it's... We call it announcements, so I put announcements and didn't delete information, so...
Fair enough.
Yeah, because that was part of the original template. No. For announcements...
Announcement?
Yeah.
Through the chair. The Vallejo Naval Historical Museum has a new exhibit called Victory for Vallejo. We are celebrating, although perhaps celebrating, memorializing, honoring the end of World War II, 80 years on, but it's specifically about the end of World War II, victory over Japan, Imperial Japan, and the Pacific, and then what happened in the time after that, Mare Island, and specifically in Vallejo. So it's relevant today, and it spans decades. So it's not just about World War II, but it's relevant in going forward in the future and how Vallejo faces the challenges ahead. And it is free on the third Saturday of the month, and it is going through August 30th.
Vice Chair Vidor?
Thank you. Through the chair. Vallejo Shakespeare in the Park opened, had our opening weekend this last weekend, and we are now taking the show on the road to Benicia Martinez Fairfield and then down to Piedmont. But then we are back here in Vallejo on August 15th and 16th at Vino Godfathers, if you would like to come and see some live Shakespeare production here in Vallejo. And that's my announcement.
Any other announcements?
If you notice in the minutes how nondescript your announcements are, because you don't forward the information to me, and they will remain that way until you provide me the information.
Great. Our next scheduled meeting date is September 22nd, 2025. As mentioned, there will be no meeting in August. And with that, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
At 8:49 a.m. Thank everyone.